Good afternoon and welcome to the New York City Council hearing of the Committee on Governmental Operations, State and Federal Legislation. At this time, can everybody please silence your cell phones? If you wish to testify, please go up to the Sergeant-at-Arms desk to fill out a testimony slip. At this time and going forward, no one is to approach the dais. I repeat, no one is to approach the dais. Thank you for cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon. Thank you all for being with us today. I am Councilmember Lincoln Ressler, and I am really excited to be the Chair of the Committee on Governmental Operations in State and Federal Legislation. I'd like to acknowledge and welcome my colleagues who are with us today, my friend and neighbor, Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, and former Chair of the GovOps Committee, a woman who needs no introduction, Councilmember Gail Brewer. I wanted to focus our first hearing on the Mayor's Preliminary Management Report, the PMMR, because the PMMR is really the Mayor's midterm report card for fiscal year 2024. And quite frankly, he is not passing. The PMMR paints a picture of mismanagement, of a mismanaged city. And my goal for the hearing today is to focus our collective attention on the areas where the Adams Administration can and must do better. I'd like to thank the team from the Mayor's Office of Operations for attending today's hearing and providing testimony. As a former Ops staffer, I have a great deal of respect for the work that you do. We did also invite the Chief Efficiency Officer, who is specifically tasked with working with agencies to assess the goals and metrics in the PMMR, as well as representatives from the Municipal Services Assessment Office, which monitors and assesses the delivery of services that are measured in the PMMR. It is unfortunate that both of these semi-mysterious offices have declined to attend today's hearing. As I mentioned, we're conducting oversight into the PMMR, a charter-mandated document that evaluates the performance of municipal agencies for the first four months of the fiscal year. This report captures 2,000 indicators from every city agency from July through October of calendar year 2023. I want to acknowledge all of the hard work by the Mayor's Office of Operations Performance Management Team, who put together the PMMR and related reports, who put together the PMMR as well as related reports. They are, this work is absolutely critical for instilling transparency and accountability in city government. And I especially want to credit the Mayor's Office of Operation Director, Dan Steinberg, for his leadership in creating the Dynamic Mayor's Management Report. This new and compelling tool provides meaningful, real-time accountability of agency performance, so we are not just waiting for the PMMR and the MMR to be released. For administration that has been appropriately criticized for reducing transparency, this is an important and notable step in the right direction. The Mayor loves to talk about getting stuff done, but the findings in the PMMR tell a very different story. Under the Charter, the Mayor's Office of Operations is charged with the accountability to catch issues in real time and understand when city services are going off the rails. Indeed, Ops plays a critical role in not only providing performance management and support for city agencies, but also providing project management expertise to make sure the priority initiatives of the administration are effectively implemented and that problems are being flagged and fixed in real time. NYPD response times to crimes in progress are up by almost two minutes year over year and are up almost six minutes since pre-COVID. The core function of the Police Department is to respond to and solve crimes in our communities. Instead, we have seen response times lag dangerously and massive increases in broken windows policing relating to minor issues. The NYPD is on pace this year to quadruple the number of minor summons issued since the time the Mayor came into office, while at the same time spending approximately $1 billion on overtime. Despite reductions in crime, the Mayor is reversing the progress that has been made in recent years to end mass incarceration in New York City. Adult populations in our jails has increased by almost 1,000 folks since the Mayor took office, despite the humanitarian crisis on Rikers Island. And the number of kids, kids in jail, has doubled since the Mayor came into office and is up 31% year over year, according to the PMMR. As has been widely reported, timely approvals of cash assistance and food stamps applications for New Yorkers struggling to put food on the table have plummeted, despite litigation and extensive council oversight over multiple years. While most New Yorkers likely aren't aware of the PMMR, the indicators it includes have very real implications on their lives. A recent report revealed that New York City has experienced the largest increase in poverty in a decade, with nearly 2 million New Yorkers and 1 in 4 children now living in poverty. These New Yorkers especially need a city government that is delivering quality services to meet their needs, and these kids deserve every possible service we can provide to set them on a pathway for success. The PMMR indicators tell a story of city agencies that are struggling due to seven painful rounds of the Mayor's budget cuts and extensive hiring freezes that have substantially shrunk our city government workforce. The PMMR shows clearly that city agencies cannot achieve their goals as the Mayor cuts their workforce and slashes their budgets. We will hear today from the leadership team at Ops about how your office is responding to these troubling trends and what your team is doing to get our city back on track. I'd also just like to thank Councilmembers Ina Vernikov and Councilmember Shahanah Hanif for joining us today as well. I want to thank Jayce Reganapathy and Erica Cohen from the committee staff for their support in putting this hearing together. And I just want to take a moment to thank my chief of staff, Molly Haley, who is like just freaking brilliant and really appreciate. And so thank you for all your help in putting this together and for everything we do. And our exceptional Communications Director, Neem Mooney. And I'd also like to thank Lynn Schulman, who is on with us. Councilmember Schulman's on from Queens. She unfortunately has a cold. We hope she's feeling better. I will now turn it over to Committee Counsel to swear on our first panel.
Thank you, Chair Ressler. I'm Jayce Reganapathy. I am Counsel to the Committee on Governmental Operations in State and Federal Legislation, and I will be moderating this hearing. During this hearing, I will be calling on panelists to testify, and I would like to remind anyone who is joining us to testify via Zoom that you will be on mute until your name is called to testify, at which time you will be unmuted by the host. For those of you who are testifying in person, be sure to sign up with a Sergeant-at-Arms even if you have registered in advance. And when we do call public testimony, you're invited to come to the table and deliver your testimony once you have been queued. Please listen for your name to be called, as we will periodically be calling them out. At this time, we will have the first panel of testimony from the Mayor's Office of Operations, and then we will hear from members of the public. During the testimony, during the hearing, if Councilmembers would like to ask questions of the administration or of a specific panelist, please let me know, or if you are online, please use the Zoom raise hand function, and I will call on you. And for all panelists, when you are called to testify, make sure to state your name and the organization you represent, if there is any. I will now swear in the Representatives of the Mayor's Office of Operations. Today, we have Daniel Steinberg, who is Director of the Mayor's Office of Operations, and Lauren Quinones, First Deputy Director of the Mayor's Office of Operations. Panelists, can you please raise your right hands? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth before this committee and to respond honestly to Councilmember questions?
Yes.
Thank you. You may begin.
Thank you. Before I start my formal testimony, I just want to sincerely thank the Chair for holding this hearing. It's been over a couple of years since the Council had an MMR hearing, and we consider the MMR the quintessential oversight resource. And so the fact that you're using it to criticize the administration is something that we consider a triumph of democracy and evidence that we're meeting the highest standards of transparency and accountability. So we're very happy to be here. And we're mostly going to, we're going to answer all of your questions, and we'll provide context and explanations as a report does. And with the caveat that there might be some questions that are directed toward agencies at budget hearings, but we want to be substantive as possible today. Let me start my testimony. Good afternoon, Chair Ressler and members of the Committee on Government Operations. My name is Dan Steinberg. I'm Director of the Mayor's Office of Operations. I'm joined today by Lauren Quinones, the First Deputy Director of the Mayor's Office of Operations, who oversees the preparation and publication of both the Preliminary Mayor's Management Report and the Mayor's Management Report. The MMR stands as a pioneering example of radical transparency and accountability since its origin, and my office has taken a number of crucial steps to modernize it and form and substance. In the wake of the fiscal crisis of the 1970s, the city pledged to more scientifically manage its operations by deploying data. Instead of management by crisis, the city would measure agency performance and proactively address issues that arise. It began as a pilot program by the Fire and Highways Departments and evolved in July 1976 to management by objectives, which for the first time compelled city managers to articulate and quantify their performance goals as a baseline for evaluation. In 1977, the MMR and PMMR were codified in the city charter and have been published biannually ever since. The PMMR offers an early evaluation of the city performance in the first four months of the fiscal year, fair to call it a report card, while the MMR, released in September, provides analysis of the full fiscal year. Each report details agency goals and performance in clear terms, allowing stakeholders to closely monitor government performance. The MMR and PMMR track approximately 2,200 performance indicators across 46 city agencies. Each agency provides explanations and context for their performance, documenting successes and accounting for shortfalls. No other city government comes close to this level of accountability to its constituents and to itself. This administration has aggressively worked to usher the PMMR and the MMR into the 21st century through digital enhancements and new performance indicators. Last year, we launched and codified the Dynamic Mayor's Management Report, the DMMR, we'll call it today, a digital, interactive platform that allows users to compare indicators across agencies in time with user-friendly data visualizations for each indicator. Furthermore, the DMMR provides monthly updates for nearly 1,200 performance indicators, allowing all stakeholders to monitor city performance more closely, more meaningfully, in more real time. The real magic of the DMMR, obviously, is that it makes it very easy to find what you're looking for, whether you're a layperson or an expert in government. You don't need to be an expert or a statistician to find what you're looking for and to understand it. And that's really what was our goal. It's greatly improved the usability of agency performance data, making it easier to explore historical trends, compare indicators through Data Vis, and download the data for their own research. In January 2023, Operations further increased access to the data by publishing an expanded performance indicator dataset on the Open Data Portal. This dataset is updated monthly and synchronized with updates to the DMMR. Previously, the portal only contains static datasets for each individual publication, severely limiting longitudinal analysis. More recently, the Mayor's Office of Operations made several accessibility-related improvements to the DMMR, including improved keyboard accessibility, the ability to translate the site's content into eight languages other than English, and an accessibility statement page for the public to leave feedback. We will continue to improve the DMMR with new features such as data stories that will highlight important trends across agencies, showcasing how the public and other stakeholders can leverage the MMR to conduct their own analysis. Following its launch, our office held two trainings for the city council staff and another training for stakeholder organizations on how to utilize the platform. We'd be happy to host additional trainings for council staff and to help you better serve your constituents. The Mayor's Office of Operations also works collaboratively with stakeholders inside and outside government. We institutionalized a process to consider, track, and implement new indicator recommendations from the city council for the first time. So far, this administration has added about 65 indicators that were recommended by the city council, such as the number of newly constructed schools by the SCA, the number of stop work orders by DOB, the number of litter baskets serviced by sanitation, and the number of active and closed investigations by DOI. And the proportion of New Yorkers who have management over their diabetes, as reported by the Health Department, and many others. Under the current administration, Operations has also proactively added customer-centric indicators to better track how the city serves its residents. There are over 600 indicators in the MMR considered customer-centric, with nearly 150 added over the past several cycles. Recent additions include the average time it takes for DOT to repair a pothole, the proportion of rate complaints addressed by the New York City Housing Authority, and so on. The Mayor's Office of Operations continuously meets with our agency partners to reassess the applicability, transparency, and accuracy of the indicators within their chapters. Our office has led agencies through a guided self-review process to realign MMR chapters with their missions and services, revising where needed goals, services, and indicators, and updating performance targets, many of which hadn't been updated in a long time. The effort has yielded a net of seven new agency service areas, over 20 new agency goals, and over 200 new MMR indicators. The Mayor's Office of Operations also continues steps to improve the quality of the reports. This includes recently ensuring consistency in the formatting and clarity of indicator names. And I'm sorry if this sounds like we're deep in the weeds, but this is how the MMR becomes a democratic instrument, through this sort of nitty-gritty incremental progress. Clarity of indicator names and establishing a more regular and prompted revisiting and program targets ahead of the fiscal 2024 MMR will be ensuring indicator definitions have more depth and clarity in support of the public's understanding of what's being measured. One of the central aims of the MMR is to increase transparency in how local government functions. That includes showing inequities where they exist. Operations continues to expand the universe of indicators that can be disaggregated by relevant geography, such as precincts, school districts, and community boards. And in partnership with other units, we aim to expand the disaggregation of performance data geographically and demographically to better understand the inequities in services and outcomes that exist across constituencies in the city and the neighborhoods they live in. There are over 30 indicators currently labeled as equity indicators, indicating that they are disaggregated and reported in the city's annual social indicators and equity report, which you can find online, Equity NYC. While the PMMR and MMR are each published annually, and this is kind of the key point, I think, for today, the administration heavily relies upon performance data as a management tool year-round and continues to establish internal systems of results-based accountability. The Mayor is a strong proponent of active performance management, and the Mayor's Office of Operations has a series of monthly meetings with City Hall leadership focused on agency performance issues. In recognition of the systems and processes we put in place, New York City was recently awarded a platinum designation by What Work Cities, making us one of three cities in the world to achieve this high rank for data-driven management practices. However, our principal charter-mandated deliverable is the MMR and PMMR. These reports require a lot of work and attention across all agencies involved. The staff that works on it is here, and it's a minor miracle that they pull off twice a year. You see how detailed and thorough the book is. The process to produce often stretches over several months after the close of a reporting period, and we oversee a detailed schedule with many steps that includes finalizing any changes, ensuring timely submission of data, drafting, editing narratives, and of course facilitating internal reviews, approvals, and escalation. Through the PMMR, and I'll wrap up now. Through the PMMR and MMR, for nearly 50 years, Operations has strived to promote transparency and accountability regarding the performance of New York City agencies. We will steward this responsibility and appreciate the partnership with the Council to ensure these reports are the most comprehensive insight into the quality and level of service delivery. We thank you again for calling today's hearing and look forward to discussing how performance data can be deployed better and how it can be improved, what we're missing, and what we're measuring, and what we could do better. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Director Steinberg, for your testimony and for your spirit of openness in working with me and my team. I think that the radical transparency that you reference that is in the MMR, I think you have modeled in your engagement with me and my staff, and I just want to thank you for that. And your, I think, genuine openness that you bring to this hearing to try to figure out how we can do better as a city. So thank you very much. I'd like to just start with a couple overview questions around Ops. I might jump into some NYPD-related questions, and then I'll kick it over to colleagues if they have any questions. And then I have many, many more questions that I'll ask and look forward to. It's a Friday. What else are we going to do, you know? And I do also just want to acknowledge Brooklyn's newest Councilmember, David Carr, for joining us. Thank you for being here as well, Councilmember Carr. The Charter places significant responsibility on Ops to ensure effective delivery of services, maintaining the MMR and PMMR, making recommendations on the city's operations more broadly. Could you just help us provide an overview of the structure of the Office of Ops, the number of employees on each team, and in particular, could you describe the role of the Performance Management Team and the Project Management Team, and how many members are on each team, and kind of how do those teams intersect?
Sure. The real kind of pillars of operations, it does start with our Performance Management Team to some extent, which is the team that produces the MMR. They're in charge of data collection and reporting, indicator development and analysis. They support projects when indicators are required to monitor the efficacy of an intervention. And they also produce at least five mandated local law reports at different cadences, annually, biannually, monthly. So they have a lot of responsibility. But really, you know, what's important to know about them is the way they're structured and how they've been professionalized. Each analyst owns a portfolio of agencies and corresponds frequently with their counterparts at agencies, and it's their job to really be data detectives, to understand the data we're looking at and why it's moving the way it is. They're put in the hot seat very often. They often brief deputy mayors directly, and the deputy mayors expect them to know the answers to questions around what's pushing the numbers in a given direction. So we're very proud of that team and its growth. The Project Management Team, which you're an alumni of, I believe, Senior Policy Advisor, and we are well aware of your accomplishments at the office and proud of the work you did at ID NYC.
That's under oath.
I know.
Yes.
I know. I considered that. Maybe not enough. So the Project Management Team acts as an internal management consulting shop for City Hall and really is charged with driving the Mayor's overall agenda, but also to drive efficiency in government. The PM team supports, obviously, they bring structure and process to anything that they're working on. Policy and program implementation, they launch new initiatives, often incubating programs at Ops, like ID NYC, before it's moved to the agency. But they also work on program design and launch, strategic planning. They've been instrumental in many of the plans that have come out of City Hall. And organizational improvement, and they often support emergency response in ad hoc ways. They're one of the more nimble and talented teams in the City Hall orbit, and they're sort of used very flexibly. A new branch, so that's the two teams. A new branch that we created is data management and analytics. This, to some extent, came out of the pandemic, where Operations played a very central role in coordinating data across government. So everything from the epidemiological data to the outreach data, you know, that was key toward reaching the public. And so what we did was, we built a more formal, yet very small, data management analytics unit. They specialize in more sophisticated kind of statistical techniques. So if there's something that needs more probing from the performance data or elsewhere, that's the team that will sort of apply more sophisticated methods to the analysis. But they also have geospatial skills in terms of GIS and mapping, and that's one of the big contributions they make also to the City Hall orbit. And to some extent, mostly for internal purposes, they do product development and data engineering. So when we need to build a database or we need an internal dashboard, they do a lot of the backend work that's required and a lot of the automation. One of their public-facing products that recently was vastly expanded and is about to go through another expansion is the Capital Projects Dashboard. When you, Councilmember, were at Ops, it had about 400 projects in it. Now it's got about 10,000 projects in it. And that was accomplished through backend magic in the sense that it's combining data from FISA and the financial management system with project schedule data from over 20 different agencies from their project management system. So we're very proud of that work. And I don't think it'll ever get the credit it deserves, although it will be the subject of a lot of scrutiny, which is, you know, in the spirit of today's hearing and our mission. Those are sort of the core teams, but we do have other functions. I should have said we have about 60 people overall in the office. The Project Management Team is actually down to nine right now. I believe it was more robust when you were there. We're working on that. The Performance Management Team is a similar size. But we get to 60 through all these other functions that I'll just quickly mention. We do rulemaking, where we administer the City Administrative Procedure Act, KAPA, and facilitate key elements of rulemaking process, like plain language review. You may remember, we have an inspection team called Scout that surveys city streets in search of commonly reported quality of life issues. They actually have a very important project right now focused on privately-owned public spaces. We administer the citywide central insurance program that provides nonprofit vendors that has human service contracts with the required insurance coverages. So another not glamorous, but really crucial function. And we also administer the HUD Consolidated Plan, which is a really massive compliance document that's required to get federal money from the HUD program and from CBGB grants. And we have some roles in customer service. You may remember, we still run the Language Access Secret Chopper Program, and we run the Customer Service Awards, which is actually we're very proud of, and other projects. So that's sort of a sweeping overview of how we're structured.
That's very helpful. If my notes are correct, my notes are that we were at about 110 people in Operations back in 2018. So down to 60-something today, that's a pretty steep drop. Is that, do we have that broadly right?
That sounds very plausible. I would say that there have been some structural changes to how Operations is. So if your number includes NYC opportunity, they no longer report to Operations.
That could be.
We also, and Mayor's Office of Data Analytics is now in the CTO portfolio.
Right.
So those are two.
But that's a small number of staff in Moda, right?
It's about 10 probably. Yeah. Yeah. Those are the two biggest. And of course, I mean, the other obvious one is 3-1-1 reported operations when we were there. And that was pandemic era kind of change, but.
We're definitely eager to ask you some 3-1-1 questions anyway, since we know Ops has a long history with 3-1-1, and we're very concerned about that data. I'll just, a couple other quick things I want to ask about. How is the DMMR, which I, again, I want to give you all real credit for, how is that informing and helping Ops respond more quickly to concerning changes in performance?
Well, I think my vision for the office was really to take this remarkable data infrastructure that city government already had and had developed over the course of decades and put it to work as part of a robust and continuous performance management regime. And that's not possible unless the data is updated more frequently and we're all working off the same data. And so the entire notion of dynamic means that the data is updated, readily available to the Council, to us, the public. And to us, that's the highest and best use of technology in government. And, you know, performance management has to be a constant activity. It's not a communications exercise. When the MMR was a PDF that was put out twice a year, that's not performance management. And so we needed structures, processes, tools that feed into a culture of data-driven management and policymaking. And that's sort of what the DMR is a huge component of. We, you know, I talked about what we did with the team, but that's how the DMR kind of connects to our larger vision and what we're trying to create within city government.
And I was pleased to hear you say that your Performance Management Team is regularly engaging deputy mayor offices and sharing feedback and input with them. Could you just kind of walk us through when you all see a critical indicator moving in the wrong direction, whether that be in the PMMR or the DMMR? Like, what's the process for flagging issues for City Hall and agencies? Do you keep track of what action Ops has taken when an indicator is moving in the wrong direction and the corollary policy response?
So the relationship between the liaisons is kind of the crux of the value that we add, because that's where we collect information that the deputy mayors need to know in order to make decisions. We're not necessarily aspiring to come up with a solution to every single problem, obviously, and implement it ourselves. We see our sort of role as being the distillation function to really escalate the right issues and give them the information they need to make sound decisions. Obviously, our Project Management Team does directly tackle a lot of issues, and we can talk about the work they're doing. But occasionally, a flag, you know, can become a project. I always like to joke that every flag is a project. It's not necessarily true, but, you know, we are always on the lookout for opportunities to intervene directly. We tend to add the most value when it's inter-agency work. And sometimes, you know, an issue that we escalate really is more appropriate for the deputy mayor to understand and manage directly with their agency, and it's ultimately their prerogative. So. So I guess the answer is it depends, but we are very rigorous in terms of how we, you know, we've built essentially data instruments that flag issues for us in an automated way, but that's no supplement for the critical faculties that we have.
And do you still use the kind of red, yellow, green?
All of it. The mayor, this mayor in particular, loves color-coded dashboards. And to be honest, just the fact that he looks at data means that other people do in the sense that it creates a sort of environment of, you could almost call it paranoia, and that I don't think any manager wants to be responsible for data that the mayor's seen and they haven't. So it's very helpful in terms of like the culture of performance management. But I just wanted to add that, you know, sometimes the data just doesn't speak for itself, right? So we have thresholds, something could go up or down 10%, and that'll percolate in the systems that we have. But sometimes an indicator that slips 5% has more significant ramifications for the public. Sometimes something that just slips a little bit has very severe implications or is happening because of a very severe root problem. So that's where our staff and their sort of knowledge come into play and the relationships that they have. And frankly, sometimes they get better, higher quality information directly from the agencies than leadership might. And so we add a lot of value through maintaining those relationships.
That is very helpful. I'm gonna jump in to NYPD-related questions, but, you know, we'll maybe just, I think we have colleagues who would like to ask questions, but not just this second. So I'll keep going happily. So as I mentioned in my opening statement, you know, one of the core functions of the department, perhaps their most important function, is to respond to crime and help keep our community safe. The PMMR showed that NYPD, from the time dispatch receives a call to the time officers arrive to all crimes in progress, is on average now 13 minutes and 48 seconds. That's up almost two minutes, 108 seconds from just last year, but that's up almost six minutes from FY19. So how has operations responded to this extreme decline in NYPD response times?
Thank you for the question. Obviously, it's been a real focus of the administration's. The full context, and a lot of what I'll be doing today is providing the full context, is that both NYPD and FDNY response times have been steadily slipping over the past couple of years. And if you look at the breakdown of what's driving it, the travel segment is making up the lion's share of the increase. And so there's really no doubt that worsening traffic conditions are a factor. You know, to step back, emergency response times were never better than they were during the height of the pandemic. Literally true in the city's history, there were no cars on the streets and people were generally avoiding hospitals. And so as society returned to normal kind of in-person activities, we're seeing a steady increase in response times, but also in the number of vehicle trips into the city every day. So if you look across transportation systems, buses and trains have come back between, ridership has come back between 60 to 75%. While car ownership is exponentially higher than before the pandemic, and the number of cars that are traveling across bridges and tunnels every day has actually increased compared to pre-pandemic baseline. So more people are driving, fewer vehicles are entering Manhattan, the Manhattan core compared to pre-pandemic, and we're seeing slower vehicle speeds on Major Boulevard citywide. And this is part of a national phenomenon, shifting patterns of travel behavior and work in terms of the configuration and the intensity of traffic. Chicago, Miami, Las Vegas have had similar issues. They're not necessarily doing as much as the city and state are doing. But, you know, for this reason, we've actually had DOT brief the emergency response agencies on these trends, and we found that there wasn't enough dialogue between the people who study traffic as a science and the people who have to navigate it in order to respond to emergencies. You know, obviously, demand is always an issue. The number of incidents had been increasing over the time period that you described, both in terms of crimes and in progress and hospital visits. And so, you know, I think in terms of what we're doing about it, my office does closely work with the deputy mayor for public safety. We reestablished the 911 Operating Committee. It meets monthly, there's sub-working groups that are, you know, the sort of purpose of the committee was to establish a performance management kind of regime, that we're all looking at the same data, monthly, quarterly, and using it to sort of ask questions and chart progress. The, and there's a number of areas that we're exploring. And it's kind of a sprawling set of issues, because it could be everything from hospital turnaround times when ambulance drops somebody off to optimizing the DOA process, which is a very morbid construct, and the availability of units. So it's a multi-dimensional problem. There are real forces at work, some beyond our control, but not, that doesn't obviously mean that we don't try to take action. So that's a sort of high-level description of what's happening.
I think that's helpful. But I have a variety of questions from your response that are a little confounding to me. My recollection of the data across the board is we didn't see the same extreme uptick in FDNY or ambulance response times. It's significantly worse for the NYPD. And not just for all crimes in progress at 13 minutes and 48 seconds, even for critical crimes, the most serious crimes, things like shots fired, robbery, assault with a weapon, were up almost two minutes year over year. It was always under five minutes on a response, as a response time, which is, you know, a great response. Now we're up at over seven minutes and 18 seconds. So down, and it was, you know, year over year, to see that kind of huge increase for the most violent crimes that are happening in New York City is deeply disturbing. And while I appreciate that we've got a variety of congestion issues, especially cars coming in and out of Manhattan and the Central Business District, you know, most NYPD travel is relatively short distances within a precinct. And the congestion that we may be dealing with in lower Manhattan doesn't impact the Northeast Bronx or Southeast Queens or Central Brooklyn, and the ability for PD cars to travel within a precinct in a timely fashion. So, you know, I am interested in digging in more to the data that you all have access to that I don't think is captured in the PMMR on the travel times. But I have to say, my guess from looking at your data is that we're actually seeing, actually, before I go into my hypothesis of what's really causing the delay, I just want to ask, the response times on critical crimes was a, I know this gets confusing, but the response times on critical crimes was a critical indicator? So it was one of your critical indicators, from what I understand, and critical crimes is just the most serious crimes, right? So, and for the public, the Mayor's Office of Operations designates critical indicators as the most consequential, important indicators for us to follow and track as administration and for the public at large. My understanding is that this was removed as a critical indicator. Could you help us explain why that is? And was, what the process was for making that decision? Was Deputy Mayor Banks, the Office of Municipal Services Assessment, like, were they involved in making that decision? Is that an Ops decision? Thank you.
No problem. Just to step back, in terms of response times, one thing you'll notice is that response times to fires barely fluctuates over the past 100 years. The only real way that one fluctuates is if you were to open or close more fire companies and ladders. It's really the two that tend to move, and we need to pay very close attention to our response to medical emergencies and crimes in progress and critical crimes in progress. And one thing that you'll note, although I don't want to claim credit because data can be very noisy, but if you look at the months since the PMMR was published, the response times for critical crimes in progress have actually started to improve while response times to medical emergencies haven't. So, you know, that's something that we're obviously trying to understand, but it's important to see that progress.
Can you cite anything specifically?
It's in the DMR for sure. Yeah, if you look at the end-to-end response times, you could see the most recent months. I'll have to look more carefully. I don't remember making a policy decision around what's a critical indicator. There is some history around why there's so many different indicators about end-to-end response times. The agencies report dispatch and travel-only metrics, which are in the report also, that exclude the call-taking portion. You know, that's for the purpose of seeing the different segments of what's involved in response times. It's sort of a historical artifact, though, of how, because the complete end-to-end time wasn't always reported in the MMR before fiscal 2014, actually, because the data was spread across multiple systems and hadn't been combined. So now we have these like truly holistic end-to-end times that are reported in the MMR that are the critical ones, but I don't know what you're talking about exactly. So I have to.
We were just trying to look, actually, in the book. Sometimes there are just straight clerical or like print errors, so we're gonna, we will check and get back to you. We don't have any memory off the top of our head of us dropping a critical there.
But I would say that some are more important than others, and that the end-to-end holistic kind of response times are the ones that we encourage the public to use to sort of assess what's really happening.
Okay. I do have additional NYPD questions and frankly have my own analysis for why we're seeing these response times move in the wrong direction. But I know the council member, Vernikov, sorry, you know, has a set of questions, so I wanted to kick it over to her.
I'll be sure. Thank you very much. Carrie, you mentioned 3-1-1, so I'd like to bring that up just for a bit. I'm sure it wouldn't be shocking to you to hear that people often complain about 3-1-1. And my constituents very often are, you know, very, should I say annoyed by having to call 3-1-1 and then not hear back from an agency or not get a response to their complaint. So I just wanted to know how your agency is dealing with helping this process, because obviously we want constituents to be able to call, make complaints, and hear back and see their issues resolved. Thank you.
No, thank you for the question. There were some specific 3-1-1 data flags that I have a feeling the council member will also raise, but to start with your really important fundamental question about what do we know about 3-1-1 and the satisfaction of customers and what are we doing about it? I think one thing that people don't fully appreciate is that for most of 3-1-1's history, there was no feedback loop in terms of customer satisfaction. The city sort of assessed whether it was doing a good job by how quickly it closed complaints, which is not a legitimate solution, because sometimes complaints get closed for reasons that have nothing to do with the problem being addressed. And so one of the big innovations that we have right now is a resident satisfaction survey. If you've made a 3-1-1 complaint and you leave your information, you now get a survey sent to you automatically that asks you about, oh, and I'm sorry, it gets sent to you after the complaint is closed out. And so you have the opportunity to directly tell the city whether it was to your satisfaction or not. This is all new data that the city's in the process of ingesting, and it tends to make a public resource. The Office of Data Analytics is stewarding that project, but for us, for our purposes, it's a breakthrough in terms of really knowing, you know, what people think of each particular service and the cities, the quality of the city's response. The one other thing I wanted to mention is that one issue that we're focused on as an office is the quality of the resolution descriptions. 3-1-1 hasn't updated many of these resolution descriptions in 20 years. So we think that much more clear information can be pushed out to the public, more specific information about what the city actually did or didn't do. And we think that will go a long way in terms of earning the public's trust that the city's being clear and candid about what action is taken. So there is a lot of activity in that space, and I think that we're better positioned than ever to kind of acutely address whichever service requests are not to the satisfaction of New Yorkers.
Thank you. And how do they get that survey if they just make a phone call? Because I know there's different ways they can reach out to 3-1-1.
That's true. I can't remember if you get it, yeah, only online. That's right. Right, you have to leave your email address for it to know where to send it.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think that might be difficult for some people if they're just calling. There may be language barriers or elderly people are calling.
That's a fair point.
Maybe we can figure something out with that.
No, definitely. And I do want to direct you to the Office of Data Analytics. We've been supporting their work on this. And, but they're situated within the CTO portfolio, which also is 3-1-1, so this has sort of been their, the resident satisfaction kind of survey has been their project that we've worked with them on. But it's a really important progress.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember, I will keep going and if anyone else, oh, no, I was thanking my colleague. The, I'm not thanking Dan for anything. The, just kidding. Okay, great. So I would like to shift to what I think is driving the increase in response times, which is that we've seen, you know, a phenomenal increase in minor summons that are being issued by the NYPD. I'll just quote the mayor who often talks about precision policing. And this, you know, this is what precision policing is about. The failures of the past is we stopped anyone, searched anyone based on their ethnicity and based on the demographics or the zip code where they may have lived. We're not doing that. We're not going to allow that to happen in our city. We're not going to break the law to enforce the law. We can have the balance that we are looking for by using precision policing, which I completely agree with the sentiment and think that the data tells truly a 180-degree different picture. That is the opposite of what has happened under Mayor Adams' tenure. NYPD has had nearly a 70% increase year over year in imposing minor summons for things like having an open container on the street. We're on track for almost a four-fold increase since the mayor came into office in 2021 if the trends from the first four months of the year continue through the whole fiscal year. So we've already, in fact, in the first four months of this year, imposed more minor summons than we did in all of fiscal year 2021, the year before Mayor Adams came into office. Just, and we've looked at data with partners that show overwhelmingly, these are low-income black and brown folks, disproportionately overwhelmingly low-income black and brown folks. Truly, we're talking about the opposite of precision policing. So, could you explain, so this takes up an enormous amount of staff time. Is that considered as a causal factor in why we are doing a worse job of responding to crimes in progress, especially serious crimes in progress, when NYPD officers are spending so much of their time on minor violations, quality of life issues like an open container law?
I think it's a good and fair question to ask the police department. You know, we see the same numbers that you're citing. They have not been the central focus of our reform efforts, because the data we're looking at is suggesting that there's a number of other factors also. But we're glad that you're connecting dots in the data and encourage you to bring those questions to the appropriate party.
Have you consulted with, well, to me, one of the things that Ops often does is track whether an indicator is good or bad. And there's clearly been a policy decision made by this administration to phenomenally increase the number of summons that are issued, number of people that are arrested, increase incarceration. That has been, it's happening across the board in such clear trends and clear numbers, a policy decision has been made. For this in particular, on minor summons, is that a good thing? Does Ops have a perspective? Is that a good policy that this administration is making, or are you just calling balls and strikes?
I don't think we can provide a sweeping analysis of it. I think, you know, in some areas, we've seen summonses correspond with improvements in street cleanliness, for instance, when it comes to the sanitation departments, you know, enforcement of properties and recycling streams. But as a sweeping kind of statement, I'm not sure we're qualified the way in.
Okay. And just to kind of ask in a broader way on what I think is causing these serious and deeply concerning delays in response times to crimes in progress and to the most serious dangerous crimes, beyond the travel times, are you looking at what other policy decisions may be driving the performance indicators? That very much feels to be the role and responsibility of Ops. Do you have anything to add beyond your suggestion that travel times may be a factor?
I would say we're going to where the data points us, but you're making plenty of legitimate points about, you know, what competes for the time and resources of responders, and we're happy to bring them back to the committee.
Okay. And have these major shifts in the data been flagged for Deputy Mayor Banks and his team? and his team?
Yes, repeatedly. And they're well aware, and they have their own tools that we've built for them to monitor closely.
We're looking, you know, as you know well, Mayor Adams has imposed seven rounds of budget cuts since coming into office just over two years ago. We've taken 15 or 16% out of the operating budget that we fund at community colleges, significant cuts to 3K, library service, and yet NYPD overtime is up $76 million year-over-year, and we are on pace to spend about $1 billion on NYPD overtime if the trends continue from the PMMR. Does operations examine the link between spending, such as the bloated overtime NYPD budget and performance metric changes? Are you able to make an argument that this is necessary or valuable spending, or not?
Generally speaking, it's part of our mission to consider the relationship between resources and performance. So to the extent that we're in dialogue with agencies around what's an appropriate target, those are really important inputs. I'm not sure if I can answer it as a policy question exactly, unless you restate the question.
No, I think you've responded. Look, I think that the, I just want to ask, because this, could I actually get clarification? Who's in charge of the municipal services, this Office of Municipal Services Assessment?
That would be the Deputy Mayor for Public Safety.
And who, but who's the director of the office? It reports into Deputy Mayor Banks. Who's, because it was reported in the press yesterday, one thing, it's been reported to us differently. Do you know who's in charge of the office?
I don't know off the top of my head, unless you do. Not off the top of my head.
Okay. Because it was written in the press yesterday. I'm just, you know, you know, somebody reads the Politico stories that Tim Pearson is actually in charge of the office. When it was reported to us by other officials in city government, we were told that there was a Deputy Inspector Brian Bohannon, I may be butchering his name, I apologize to the Irish, that is in charge of the office, Brian Bohannon Jr. None of this means anything to you?
I'll follow up with you. The name certainly rings a bell, but I have to follow up.
I mean, I do think it's notable that this office that's been created to, quote, "improve city agency performance" has a similar mission to the Office of Operations. We don't even know who the director is. Like, it just seems to me like Deputy Mayor Banks and his whole team are operating in a silo unto themselves and doing whatever the heck they want, and then there's everybody else in city government. So we can't, you can't speak to what the Office of Municipal Service Assessment has been doing in response to the NYPD overtime, the extreme increase in response times, the huge increase in minor summons issuance.
I know they've been deployed most heavily on asylum seeker work. They have been, you know, the boots on the ground in terms of understanding conditions at shelter sites. But beyond that, I think the questions need to be directed there.
I mean, I've been asking for two years to meet with their office about issue, I mean, with the deputy mayor's team about issues that are happening in our district, and we get radio silence. So this is consistent with our experience to date. Secret office, secret operation. I do want to just ask about the CCRB, and then I'll pause if anyone else wants to jump in. You can do it. Why don't I just pause now then?
Okay.
Okay. Perhaps it's not surprising that, considering we've seen a huge increase in summons and arrests by the NYPD over these past two years, major increase shown in the PMMR year-over-year, there's also been a major uptick in civilian complaints. I think we're up 60% in the PMMR year-over-year, on track to be almost double as many civilian complaints about police misconduct as when the mayor came into office. Due to budget cuts, CCRB recently announced that they're stopping probes into a variety of different types of allegations, when officers are accused of improperly removing someone to a hospital, seizing, inappropriately seizing property, and more. Refusing to provide their name and badge number, which I think is something that our friend, former council member Antonio Reynosa, worked on. Have you discussed these trends with the CCRB and the NYPD? Have any policy prescriptions been identified in conjunction with Mayor's Office of Operations to try to address this significant increase in police misconduct allegations?
We've briefed the mayor directly on those numbers, and we've taken note of them also and escalated them. As you're stating, they're high by historical standards. And the CCRB takes a great deal of pride in their outreach, which, you know, to some extent they feel like is working. But clearly, there's a lot going on. And the mayor has been also very focused on more, on expediting the review process, because right now it takes far too long. It was, I think, a component of the state-of-the-city speech. And from a performance perspective, that's something that we're very attuned to. We're also attuned to the mediation process from a performance perspective, in the sense that officers appear to be more eager to enter mediation than civilians. And so these are issues that we brought to the mayor's attention fairly recently, and to the mayor's council, who oversees the CCRB.
Do they have any recommendations of things that could be done about this?
The context of the meeting was more us briefing them on the phenomenon, so I think better directed at the mayor's council.
We will follow up, but I, it's just, we've seen this historic increase in complaints about NYPD misconduct, and the mayor's response was to cut the CCRB budget and reduce the amount of staff so that they can respond to fewer complaints when they're already, as noted in your testimony and the PMMR, taking far too long to resolve complaints. So it just doesn't make sense.
They did improve this cycle, but...
We appreciate the mild and modest improvement. That's better than the alternative, but it's still unacceptable. And I, I'm sure the CCRB is trying hard on outreach, but the reason that we get more complaints is because there's more misconduct. And when we are issuing phenomenally more minor summons, when we are arresting more New Yorkers, we get more complaints of people being mistreated. And I'm disappointed that we're cutting their budget and not providing the meaningful support to make sure that those allegations of misconduct are swiftly and appropriately investigated, and people are held accountable for wrongdoing. I will pause and pass it over to Councilmember Gutierrez.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you both for your preparation today. I wanted to just expand a little bit on the 3-1-1 conversation. As Chair of the Tech Committee, we constantly raise this with their Director Joe, but also just in conversation with members. I'm curious about the customer, the critical indicator for customer satisfaction. You touched on it a little bit. It was actually raised at this week's hearing. Can you expand a little bit more on kind of what information is provided to you from 3-1-1, how it's presented to you? What are the data sets that they're providing?
Sure. In the MMR specifically, we kind of report on every component of their operations as a call center, you know, so it's really like, you know, the wait time.
Yeah, no, that I see. I'm curious about the, is that what you mean, that's included in customer satisfaction?
No, that's a whole different effort that's separate from the MMR that we hope to capture in the MMR as it becomes a sort of more permanent function of government.
Right.
And so they're sort of in the, the Office of Data Analytics is in the process of building out this, and hopefully they testified about this.
They did. They did a great job.
Yeah.
It's just that 3-1-1 kind of falls in this area of like, it's hard to get a very concise sense of, yes, customer satisfaction, as Councilmember Vernikov just shared. If people are texting or emailing, then, I mean, if they're emailing, that's the only way they're going to get prompted for a customer service.
No, you're right.
Survey. So that makes it harder. I think what also is a challenge is like, they create challenges for themselves, right? They're telling people that the service complaints are closed when nothing is resolved, right? Clarity on, you know, providing a picture to demonstrate that something's been closed. I think so, they fall within a weird period. So I'm just curious how you are all looking to work with them to hear us out and incorporate some of these things that we're raising.
No, we're in total lockstep with them, and we're even working together on the IT kind of solutions to making this data more available to everybody. I think in the long run, we'd want to capture satisfaction scores in the MMR in some fashion. You know, what's complicated, obviously, is that there's hundreds of service requests, and each got a satisfaction score. And that's kind of the beauty of the tool, is that now the city has a relative sense of what, you know, which service requests are being responded to, to the satisfaction of New Yorkers. Really, like, the idea that the city would celebrate closing a complaint quickly, but not scrutinize whether it was a quality intervention, is truly the way it's been working for over 20 years. And so this, that's why I'm glad they testified about it, because this is really a new kind of, it's just a whole new capacity. The city has to understand the quality of its work.
Right. And then, and if you could just, I just want to double down on this, on the record, the public housing, the NYCHA piece, right? The kind of landmark decision that allows NYCHA tenants to file 3-1-1 complaints, which really is not any more different than what they've been doing through calling the, their complaint number that they always have. We have, we held a joint hearing on this last year, and we would really love to see an improvement on how they're reporting NYCHA and 3-1-1, on how they're reporting, on how they're responding to these specific cases. Because it was really troubling to hear from NYCHA residents that, you know, they thought that the 3-1-1 would at the very least create accountability for their complaints to NYCHA, and that was not what was happening. They were just being prompted to, again, call the same number they've always called. So I just feel like we can't throw a parade unless we figured that out.
For sure. It's the first step. And just in terms of NYCHA, well, I'm sure we're going to get to NYCHA.
Oh, there's pages here. I just want to...
I believe it. But specifically, on the issue that you raised, we added new indicators that I believe were at the behest of the council on NYCHA, that were specifically about NYCHA responsiveness to mold and rodent mitigation. So those were well received by us. So thank you for the recommendations.
No, and it is a whole other animal, and I'm sure the Chair will get into that. But specifically, I'm interested in the connection between NYCHA complaints and 3-1-1, and tenants being able to use 3-1-1 to hold NYCHA accountable, and it's not happening. So my last question, sorry, Chair, is just on, and I know that's a relatively new office, and so maybe offices specifically don't, aren't included in the charter, but the mayor's new Office of Childcare, I'm particularly interested, because obviously I care about childcare, so do so many of my colleagues. We were looking forward to understanding a little bit more about the office. As I know, in the fall, they lost their executive director. Now, they're just an office that, potentially an office that would then, you would include in the MMR at some point?
Traditionally, the MMR, and I believe the charter kind of defines it this way, are mayoral agencies. And so there are a whole, there is a universe of smaller offices that don't have...
There's just very little about childcare. I know there's a little bit scattered, like ACS maybe, but...
You're right, that childcare appears in multiple chapters, which isn't great, right? Because it's in DOE, it's in ACS. But we do have an introductory section that is specifically about this administration's kind of contributions to the childcare landscape. And so that's where we consolidate it all here. But you're right, in terms of the permanent kind of tracking of that work, it's dispersed in the report.
Okay. Are there plans to have it live in one place?
It's sort of, one of the kind of, this is almost an existential problem with the MMR, is that it's organized by agency, and it's really, its function is to assess the performance, you know, by agency. And there always are cross-cutting issues that we separately want to analyze and understand. And so the collaboration chapters up top are usually where we try to kind of tackle those issues. So it's, and there is a childcare chapter that I definitely recommend reading.
I'll do a quick search. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Gutierrez. And we are also joined by Councilmember Palladino of Queens. Thank you for being here. I just would like to follow up on some of the topics that Councilmember Gutierrez was asking about. You know, I am very concerned about the increased response times from 3-1-1. You know, it's just very frustrating when you call 3-1-1 and there's like a 77-second intro on parking policies for the next number of days, and then finally, you get to a real wait time. And my understanding is that we're down to 68% of calls being answered in 30 seconds. That was 89% just last year. So that's a major reduction overall. But the wait time is one and a half times as long during peak hours. It went from 25 seconds, over, now it's over a minute during peak hours. So that's, and it's three times as long during non-peak hours. It went from an eight-second pickup now to over 30 seconds before 3-1-1 operators getting back to you. And it just feels like it's a deliberate strategy to, maybe, you know, Joe does a great job, but it feels like it's a, it has the effect of discouraging New Yorkers from reaching out. Because if you're going to have to wait a very long time before you reach someone, you're just not going to call. And I encourage my constituents now to use the app, because it's a lot faster. But the thing that surprises me is, call volume is down, because I think my constituents are listening to me.
Just me.
Just me, yeah. I don't know how, you know District 33. We have, you know, we're a noisy bunch. So despite call volume being down, the response time is way up. How you, Ops is, 3-1-1 used to be a part of Ops, these are issues that you all are very familiar with. What's going on, and how can we fix it?
No, we do pay very close attention to these issues. The, this is another indicator where if you were to look at more recent data, it is improving. So November, December, January, that peak calls.
Are you calling me out for not being on top of all the DMMR stats?
No, I want my staff to know that.
I feel like that's the, you know...
A little bit. I mean, we do, we do want the DMMR to be the, you know, the MMR and PMMR are always going to add value, because this is where we have narrative explaining what we're seeing. But the MMR will always be more up to date. And I see my staffs, you know, scurrying with laptops, because they want you to know that those numbers are improving. And it's worth noting, but the issues, I don't want to...
This is a serious issue. I mean, I'm making a joke, but I do appreciate your focus.
But I'm also not dismissing it, because while it's improving, like, these are real performance issues that you're noting that we escalated. And there are explanations. And explanations are not excuses. But, you know, we do want to add context today. You know, you didn't, you're completely right that the calls were down. Generally, 3-1-1 are setting, you know, records in terms of total inquiries. So the system is the main customer service portal to the city is functioning very effectively in that sense. They had, you know, almost 13 million contacts across its call center during the reporting period. And they are providing more services, more information, I should say, than just responding to service requests and fielding more Spanish-language calls than ever. I think it was close to 200,000 in the reporting period. And then an additional 30,000 calls in languages other than English and Spanish. But to your question, you're right, that there were fewer calls and longer wait times. There was an increase in what 3-1-1 considers complex calls. They might have told you this in testimony. Complex calls are usually when a caller has more than one issue, more than one service request. So that was definitely a driver. And, but that's sort of the context that we have. You know, I think as a call center, it's still very popular. You know, they found that the 3-1-1 customer service, there was a recent survey where the 3-1-1 representative got a 94, you know, suggesting that nine out of 10 New Yorkers scored the experience highly in terms of interacting with a customer service agent. And that's really their prime responsibility. The agencies are responsible for responding effectively to the complaint.
And that's a perfect segue to my next question, which is that they're not responding effectively. What we saw, I mean, I saw a CBC report from 2017 that said 35 of the 2,000 or so indicators capture public perception. Maybe you all have increased it in the ensuing seven years. I hope you have. But when we looked at those indicators of how quickly we are responding, how quickly city agencies are responding to letters and calls, it's not good. I mean, Disney, the Department of Sanitation, emails and letter response times were down from, just year-over-year, 88% to 70% within 14 days on letters, down from 90% to 73% on emails. Noise complaints submitted to DEP took an average of 5.4 days to close, two days longer than pre-pandemic. Cultural Affairs is only responding to 27% of emails in 14 days. CCRB is answering 25% of letters in 14 days. CCHR is averaging wait of 10 minutes to speak with a customer service agent, up from two minutes. TLC, average time to close consumer complaints, has increased by four days. It's over a month. HRA, average in-person wait time, increased to 94 minutes. And DHS, worst of all, waiting time to speak with a customer service agent, increased from 77 minutes to 113 minutes. Who has time to wait two hours to speak to a DHS official when you're struggling with homelessness? But you then have other agencies that, you know, in the spirit of your interchange with Councilmember Gutierrez, who are, I think, just willfully misrepresenting their responses, such as the NYPD and DOC. PD reports responding to 99% of 3-1-1 service requests on time. But I promise you, I see how they close out the placard issues in my district in downtown Brooklyn, like they're not doing anything. So they can say they're closing them out, but it's disingenuous at best. Or DOC reports responding to 100% of letters and 90% of emails on time. And if that's true... And if that's true, I have a bridge to sell you. Cause like, I just, I mean, but I dig, I digress. I'm broadly concerned that what we're seeing at 311 with the slower response times, we're also seeing across the board at city agencies. Ultimately, I think this is the result of seven rounds of hu- of budget cuts and multiple hiring freezes. But for a mayor that claims that he wants to be the most accessible and the most responsive, this data tells a really different story and it's really troubling. So, you know, the, what are we doing across the board on this? I remember the Chief Efficiency Officer had created like a customer service role. I don't know if that's a real thing. I don't know what the Chief Efficiency Officer does. But, um, what global approach is being taken? You're seeing these trends across lots of agencies in the, in the PMMR. How are we, how can we do better to make sure we're engaging and responding to the complaints and concerns that New Yorkers raise?
I, I want to answer in a few ways. First of all, I think we're making the same point, but it's a very important point, that a fast response does not always mean a quality response. And, and for too long, the city's assessed its own performance by how fast it responded. And, and that was a completely flawed framework. And now we have the data available through, through the, um, satisfaction surveys to, to, you know, and what you will see invariably are often the responses that, that get closed out the fastest are the least popular in terms of satisfaction. And so it, we need a new paradigm for assessing ourselves and we finally have the data for that. Um, I, I think you raised a lot of legitimate, um, performance issues in that list. Some of them still met their target. That's always an important qualification. So something can slip and not necessarily be off track. But so, uh, some of those didn't meet their targets. And, and there are a lot of customer service indicators that have improved too, but, you know, um, i- in terms of, um, call times, uh, wait times and, and, um, letters and emails responded to. Which by the way, I'd been told were obsolete indicators for a very long time until they started performing poorly. But, um, but, um, you, so, so I think that a lot of them, you know, we explained pretty clearly in the report which ones are related to staffing and, um, which ones are related to demand. Um, you know, and, or some combination, um, to the extent, you know, demand for benefits in general right now is, you know, completely through the roof. It corresponds with the end of a lot of federal aid programs and, and, um, economic trends. And, and so there has been some kind of objective, you know, increases in demand for, for different types of services. So I, I think I can't answer it in, in two brush stroke assents because each situation is different and there are some legitimate highlights in terms of, um, agencies, um, really addressing customer service issues. But, but I think these are great questions for those agencies.
I, I, I appreciate that. And, and in some ways, this hearing, the Friday before the Monday of our budget, our preliminary budget hearing is a good segue and overview for that and that process over the next month. But I do think that this does, this requires a more global response from City Hall about how they're engaging and encouraging agencies to respond to, to complaints and concerns that they hear from New Yorkers. If I responded to 25% of constituent incoming in two weeks, like, we wouldn't be here. And if I closed out every complaint the way NYPD does, NYPD does without doing anything to help on those placard issues, I wouldn't be here. So I just mean to say that I think there are some serious issues in this data and I appreciate you advocating for their inclusion here. But hope that we can work together to improve a, agency responsiveness to, to, to community concerns. With that, I will, I, I mentioned this to Councilmember Palladino. I had the privilege of hanging out in Murray Hill and knocking on some doors and visiting Bone Park a few weeks ago. It was gorgeous. I really enjoyed it and I will kick it to her for some questions.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here and I do want to thank you very much for reaching out. As I said, it was, it was terrific to have a chairman reach, this is my first time on this committee, so I'm new. Uh, I'm learning, uh, and, uh, my colleague here had offered to take me to coffee to explain exactly what goes on in government ops because I do want to be very much involved in it. So I'm kind of getting thrown into the deep end right now because I had Parks before you. But, uh, getting into it here, I'm listening to a lot about 311. Uh, I think, uh, to keep it simple, and maybe it's been answered before I got here. 311 is divided into the boroughs. Is that correct? We have five separate 311?
It is, but I'm reluctant to answer kind of operational questions about them because we don't manage them.
You don't manage them?
We don't. They, they previously reported to Ops years ago and, and during the pandemic, they were reassigned.
So how do, how, okay, someone calls for 311. Okay, uh, and they need something done with a tree. That, does that get fielded directly to Parks and then Parks has its own 311? DEP has got their own 311. DDC has got their own 311. I just give you the lay of the land.
Yes, the 311 principally functions as a call center that federates the requests to the agencies. They, they have to work very closely together to make sure that the backend technology is seamless and.
So NYPD as well gets fielded, uh, out to their, their 311 calls? Gets fielded out to NYPD and the same thing for the fire, fire department?
That's right.
Okay. So my office is extremely busy, uh, and most of which we hear constantly is Vicki. We called 311 a hundred times or more, you know? It's three years now into the job and holy cow, we're into the hundreds and hundreds. Uh, so I just want to know, uh, more or less the lay of the land with that. I'm very curious as to each department and how many people do they have working? That now that I broke the pie up into slices, now we need to find out how many people are eating at that one slice of pie, that two slices of pie, because I want to know how many people work the 311 for NYPD. I want to know how many do at DSNY and so on and so forth. So that helped me with that. Also, I'm hearing a lot about NYCHA here. I'm wondering, why can't the different NYCHA, uh, facilities have their own 311? They don't go into the big, you know, pot of soup, do they? I mean, do they have, so they could get the, uh, individualized attention that NYCHA housing needs? You know, they should have their, uh, at, at their location, I'm talking about. Like really locate, you know, uh, bring it down to an extremely local level. Because these are gigantic problems in a gigantic city with nine million people who need nine million different things every single day. So I'm just wondering, and I will get my feet wet with my chairman and I will learn the ropes. But I do want to know, how does that work with NYCHA?
Great question. To your first question, just want to remind you, this is an obvious point that'll be intuitive, but some agencies are far more complaint driven than others in terms of their operations. So, you know, EDC, obviously they get complaints about helicopter noise. Sanitasia gets complaints about 500, you know, they have a hundred, literally hundreds of service, different service requests. So, so obviously the, the sort of resources that are deployed are, are somewhat related to the demand. In terms of 311 NYCHA, I don't think I have the expertise to, to answer their question. There was some recent movement, you know, I, I think historically NYCHA did have its own complaint system and, and that had been considered a problem in terms of its sort of detachment from 311. But, but we haven't been directly involved in that work. Um, I'm happy to follow up.
I always think when you bring it down to a smaller level, it's always easier to manage. Uh, you know, there are serious problems. There are serious issues with NYCHA. And I just see it as just too big of a problem to handle it i- in such a vast manner. I always feel breaking it up, like I have a lot of issues with SCA. This is just something that I'll, I'll lead into. Tremendous, tremendous problems with SCA. And I think, I'm going to be putting forward, actually I have, uh, legislation in right now. I'm waiting. Uh, because I am not the only council member here who's got a bucket load of things about SCA. We're talking tens, even hundreds of millions of dollars that are stuck in a pipeline that they cannot get their money. So that's for another visit. Take my time. Uh, we have got shortfalls. I'll give you an example. I am, uh, I took over an incumbent. He was there for eight years. He to- term limited out. His name was Paul Vallone. He had started a great many projects in my district with schools. Well, they of course were not finished and they have now come, since come to me. So when I was talking about a reading garden, or Paul was talking about a reading garden, I fully funded a reading garden that I thought was astronomically priced. But then again, I think everything is astronomically priced, was for $500,000. And I thought I fully funded that in my first budget year doing it. Only to find out the following year, I was $500,000 short. So you're going to tell me SCA is going to tell me that a reading garden, no bigger than the size of this room is costing a million dollars? Oh no, it's not. Because I'll get contractors to do it for $50,000 and you'll get a beautiful reading garden. I could promise you that. So I take everything, we got PS 31 that has been funded, fully funded and has not, was started in, uh, 2017. When I took office in 2022, when I won in '21, took office in '22, I made sure that those contractors were fired. The same way I made sure the contractors were fired that were hired by the Parks Department to finish Bound Park. The, this is absolutely ridiculous. I want SCA held accountable. And I told SCA within my first year of working with them, that I was going to figure them out. And I want to know where is the money? Plain and simple. And why are jobs incomplete? Why do they stop and go? Who are the contractors that they hire? Because I will do my own background check, being in the business myself, my family forever in the contracting business. I will figure it out and I want to know the background of the contractors that are hired to do the jobs that can't get done. I just want to know. And now it's our taxpayer dollars, big, big, big money that are paying for these sorts of things that should have been completed, given a starting date and all of that. And only to find out now I'm in three years and five or six of my projects are not getting started. They haven't even been getting, given a start date yet. It's absolutely ridiculous. Okay? Thank you.
No, no problem. There's one resource I just want to.
Allow me to air myself out, but thank you.
No, no, of course.
Thank you. But SCA, right there.
No, I hear you. There's one resource I just want to make sure you're aware of because SCA status as a public authority means that it has special reporting requirements under the state. So they have to submit a, uh, a report that is on the project level in terms of budget and schedule.
So wait a minute. SCA, the School Construction Authority for the City of New York. Let me make sure I get this straight. Has to report to the state? Are you kidding me?
Well, so the city doesn't have the authority to create its own public authorities in the sense that only the state can, you know, public authorities are organizations that have certain advantages in terms of their ability to contract and, and everything else. And so in, in order for any local government to create an authority, the state has to pass, um, legislation.
No way. No, don't even tell me this.
Well, so, but the SCA, but the S, the fact that the SCA is an authority is mostly to its benefit in the sense that it's, it can operate more flexibly than, than a city agency, um, but.
No, it's not at all.
Right. But, but, uh, uh, the most, most, I'm mostly telling you this because it's a very good report that they have to publish that on the project level, that includes, um, schedule and budget, that to be honest, the rest of the capital, the city's capital portfolio had to catch up to that, to that, um, quality of reporting.
So wait, PS 79 on 15th Drive and 149th Street in Whitestone?
It should have a line in the report, which is the beauty of it, where you can, you know.
Project by project. So we can, and I, I'd be happy to talk.
We are going to talk about this because this is craziness.
And I, I also, you know, I, I have similar headaches with the SCA and.
That's why I think this could be a very good bipartisan, uh, piece of legislation.
I think that's right. And I also, I'd be happy to make some introductions to some key folks over there who might be more senior. All right. Well, let's talk. Let's talk.
But please.
Thank you so much. We're all unhappy with the SCA together.
But look at the chapter in the SCA and tell us what we're not measuring that we need to measure.
That's exactly right.
We did add one that the council suggested in the most recent cycle, which is a very intuitive one. The number of schools completed was not actually, actually reported in that, as a unit metric. And so we're all ears.
And I want to make sure to acknowledge Councilmember Gennaro, who is on Zoom, uh, homesick. Uh, we hope you're feeling better, Jim. Um, thank you for being with us today. Yeah, and we did acknowledge Lynn, who's still here with us. Lynn, we hope you're feeling okay too. Okay, I did just want to say one thing on the previous item we were talking about because I got a text from a colleague that I think, um, is exactly right. The 311 often, uh, when you make complaints on the app, whether pertaining, it gets directed to NYPD, uh, and then the police department kind of automatically says your complaint has been closed and/or NYPD is not the appropriate jurisdiction. And so that's why their data looks like they're responding in real time and solving everything and other agencies are not. And so I just think there are some issues we need to work on with 311 and maybe with Councilmember Gutierrez on whether we're directing folks to the right agencies on some of these complaints, how they're getting automatically closed out. I appreciate your comments about kind of the paradigm shift of measuring the effectiveness of the response, not just that we responded, right? It's not just a checkbox. It's like, are we actually solving the problem? Cause that's certainly, um, as my staff knows, and I think the same is true for Councilmembers Gutierrez and Palladino, like, that's the expectation we have in our offices for how we're serving New Yorkers, for how we're serving our constituents. So I would like to shift gears to incarceration. Both adult and youth incarceration rates have been moving in deeply troubling directions. You know, since the mayor took office, we've seen about a 30% increase in the adult population at Rikers. And we're up approximately 50% from the nadir during COVID, where we were under 4,000 incarcerated individuals in New York. We're now at over 6,200 despite Rikers being a widely acknowledged humanitarian disaster. We're also seeing record number, record percentages of detainees who have a mental health designation, the Brad Age designation. In the PMMR, I think it was at 53% of detainees. The most recent data that we've seen puts it at 55%. So we're continuing to see a rise in people with serious mental illness in our incarcerated population. Yet, at the same time, we're seeing a significant decline in the number of health clinic visits and it's, um, uh, at Rikers. So that juxtaposition is really disconcerting. But the thing that I really want to dig in on is the reduction in reentry services. And this was a, a big fight that we had in last year's budget, where the mayor was insistent on cutting reentry programming and services and kicking well-regarded nonprofit organizations that have been providing services for years on Rikers Island out of DOC. The DMMR was great in this regard because it showed exactly the shift from June to July, fiscal year '23 to '24, when the mayor cut these programs, despite the council's willingness to fund them, uh, when the mayor insisted on cutting these programs. We saw that in June of 2023, the last month of the previous fiscal year, 21% of detainees were accessing reentry programming and services. But it dropped to 11.8%, essentially half, in the following month. And we've seen that number continue to.